I'm gonna try to make this happen, gang. First of all, wow, I've got the chills. Look at this room. Look at all the caring people in this community. Oh, wow. Thank you, thank you, thank you. You know, we really are in exciting times. We've got federal dollars sitting there. We've got ODOT sitting over there. We've got the city council right here. All our partners are in a row. And as we continue to try, how's this doing? To transition from a logging community to a tourist community, we've got so many partners on board. We've got the Economic Development with Summer and Miranda. We've got the city doing their share. And guess who else we have? Travel and Leisure, who's seen this? Woo-hoo! We are one of the top 10, number five in the world. Tourism is coming. It's our choice to choose to be an inviting town, to go with our gorgeous beaches and our gorgeous river. They talk about jet boating. They talk about tide pulling. They talk about ocean kayaking, beach combing, all of it. And what exposure for us. We're gonna see the results of this. It's exciting. Okay, so before we have some lucky winners on our awesome drawing, I want to introduce, first of all, our board. So, the board's gonna wave and jump and do the hula or whatever you do. So first, we've got Deb Trine, our VP. Deb! That woman can see holly dreams from Portland every other day. So then we've got our treasurer, our awesome treasurer, our bean counter, Sheree McNair. Our secretary, where it's gorgeous, Kim. I can't see you, Kim. Are you... Oh, there you are. Nobody wants to be the secretary. Kim doesn't, does a great job. We've got Marna Williams, who's our new chair. She's new to our board this year, and she's awesome. She comes complete with dump trucks and trailers and the whole garb. And also our chef tonight. So thank you, Marna. Renee Holm is our Head Economic Development Chairman on the Outreach Committee. And myself, Brett, who's gone playing volleyball. And she's a co-chair of the Outreach Committee. And then myself, the president. So... So now I'm really... I know. I've got some help over here. So now I'm really excited to introduce the new addition to our team, which is phenomenal. We do miss Lindsay Dixon. She's gone and headed to Antarctica for adventures in life. But we now have Anna Marie Curtis. Stand up, Anna Marie. So to just do some bragging rights, if you don't mind, with Anna. She joined us in January. She's applied for and received seven grants for a total of $108,650. I gotta turn it around. I kinda sound like a cheerleader here. But as our treasurer reported today, as of this date, and thanks to Joe for being our treasurer, by the way. I'm not our treasurer. Our accountant. Our accountant. He helped us count the beans, too. And as of 2016 to date, we have brought in $539,000. So if anybody tells you we're dreamers, they're right. But we're also executioners. What is that word? So... Somebody help me here. What? Executors? Implementers. Implementers. That's the word. Okay. So we want to introduce the city council now. And we've got a wonderful, supportive, helpful mayor, Tammy Kaufman. We've got Councilor McGilbury, and she is a with the theater. We're trying to actually compete with her because she's been there a long time. And we plan to do the same. Modeling after you. We've got a new counselor here, which is Counselor Skinner. Responsible for my lipstick tonight. And Counselor Matheson. Really wears many, many hats and is really helping with economic development. It's exciting. I do wonder truly whether our exposure with our TLT dollars is helping us get publications like this. So it's very exciting. And now I'd like to introduce ODOT. We're very lucky to have here Darryl Neville, which is head of Region Three and has been a huge, huge supporter of Gold Beach. And you'll hear soon the kind of dollars that are sitting there that we can apply for, for this town, for Main Street. And with him is Glenn Peterson. And thank you for being here. So we've got a questionnaire. We hope you'll all fill out. It's on the clipboards, on the tables there. And also, we would love you to speak. Fill out the speak form. If you don't want to, just raise your hand at the end, and we'll try to squeeze you in. We'd love to hear people's viewpoint of how, what you'd like Main Street to look like. Okay? And if you don't know what you want to say on that form, just put your name. And we'll call your name out. You can stand up, and we'll give you a microphone. It is for three minutes. You will hear a Jeopardy song playing if you go past three minutes. So I dare you. And so with that said, let's go for a raffle here. Let's win something. All right? The first prize is a copy of Bo Schindler's wonderful book, Barely Two Nipples. It's an amazing coffee table piece. It's about the history of the start of Freeman. I hope I'm saying this right, Bo. And a lot of shipmakers... What? So far, so good. Okay. And gorgeous. And if you win it, you're a lucky person. Here we go. Drum roll. Got your tickets out? Valerie! Okay. Now we've got two tickets from Caitlin at the event center for a show of your choice on October 6 and 7. And the winner is Suzanne. Or no, Summer. Summer! Summer, there's no last name. There's only one Summer here.
You can't love us.
We are buying your support. Okay. Now we've got... We need four tickets. Give me four tickets, please, for Sunset Pizza. Who the heck wouldn't want a pizza at the end of the day? They don't have to cook. And I want to thank Spike and Tyson for that. They're such community supporters. Okay. We've got Chris Worthington. All right, Chris. We've got Kara Griffith. Come on, Kara. Where are you? Not seeing you. Am I reading wrong? Carla Griffith. Is that better? There she is, Carla. Katie Hewer. Katie Hewer. And Sally Armstrong. All right. Next one. A hand-painted vase by Pour It On from Yvonne. Gorgeous, great technique. And it goes to Katie Hensley. Now we've got a gift certificate for dinner at The Landing, $50. And Mariah Tim. All right. Dewey. Dewey Powers, a huge supporter of our community and very generous, has a $75 gift certificate for dinner at Spinner's. Come on, baby. All right. Lori Lee Bartlett. All right, Lori. I like your name. And last but not least, we have two 80-mile jet boat trips with Jerry's Road Jets with lunch at Cougar Lane. Bill McNair. No, just kidding. Mary Stansel. Okay. Drum roll for the last one, please. Yeah, those two of those. But one second. Two people. Okay. Overnight with lodging and breakfast in the wintertime at Tutuun Lodge, Lori Maskell. Lori, tell them you want an outdoor soaking bathtub and fireplace. And if not, I'll call pile. We'll get the sink here. Okay. So you all know you're here because we're working towards an improved, safe, walkable, inviting town. And I would now like to hand the reins over to Anna Marie Curtis, our community coordinator. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight. This is absolutely fantastic. I am beyond thrilled that this many people showed up to hear me speak. Maybe a little nervous. Little bit about this project. This project started with the community. So this group of wonderful ladies here held some Listen to Learn sessions back in 2019. That was sponsored by the Ford Family Foundation. And what came from that Listen to Learn session is this project here. So what everybody said was underground utilities, underground utilities. We need to make our town more beautiful, more inviting. And that's what they started working on. So very quickly, they went to work, and here we are. So what we did was we raised just over $100,000. We got that from the Ford Family Foundation, Wild Rivers Coast Alliance, the Port of Gold Beach, Curry County, and then as well as some wonderful private donors. So we raised just over $100,000 to complete a feasibility study. Let's see. We are currently in the process of hiring Murray Smith Engineering. They did the feasibility study for Florence, and they're gonna be doing ours as well. We also hired a local architect, Saint Architectural Farm, to do our feasibility study. Ultimately, this is a city project, and we are here to help facilitate the conversation with the community, facilitate the conversation with city council, all of the stakeholders. We thank Sibley for coming, all of these wonderful community partners. Beacon Bronman, absolutely. So once the study is complete, then that will give us our roadmap to be able to go forward for federal dollars and state dollars. So that feasibility study will take approximately seven to nine months. And then that document will give us that roadmap to be able to take that and get the funding to pay for the construction of the project. Next up. Survey results. I wanna go back here. How many of you guys did the survey? Can you guys raise your hand for me? Thank you, guys. So we had a really wonderful response for that survey. We sent out about 1,800 survey invites, and we got approximately 250 back. Those went out to every order of mailers. So if you didn't get one, I'm sorry. But we hope that everybody was able to find that survey link either on our website or Facebook. We also put it out into the newspaper as well. So what are people saying? The top three priorities for this survey was street landscaping, pedestrian amenities, and facade improvements. Those were the top three priorities according to our survey results. The other priorities that we would like to mention are slowing down traffic and defining bike lanes. Those were also top runners there. General comments regarding the proposed Gold Beach reimagine streetscape design that we put out to the public. Some of the top words people said, "love," "the town, it looks great," "traffic," "bike lanes." So there was a lot of really great positive feedback from that. Sorry, I'm super nervous. This is way more people. Question two. So what did people think about the survey? I wanted to read a couple of those really quick because I think it makes some really good points. One of them was that it would be really great to get rid of the above ground poles, but we also need to consider the cost, how many years of disruption it could cause to businesses, and of course, the monuments and cost of the project. And we realize that that is a big concern for a lot of people. We hear this a lot, and I'm sure that many of you guys are thinking that exact same thing. But what is the alternative? Because ultimately, this change is inevitable, right? We have tourists coming to our community. We have increased traffic in our community. We have the county-level TLT fence, as well as the city-level TLT fence that are bringing in more people from outside of this area to Gold Beach. So we do have an increased need for traffic control. So project like this, our goal is to involve the community, get the community impact, and get your guys' feedback. Because the other alternative is somebody gets hurt, and now we have to react. And this gives us an opportunity to plan and actually be very thoughtful throughout this process and include you guys in this process as well. So ultimately, you know, change is inevitable, and the change is happening here in our community. So we want to really stay ahead of that as best as we can. The third question. General comments regarding the existing conditions. Some of the top comments were slowing traffic down because it can be very dangerous to cross 101. The need to protect our local businesses and wanting part of the funds to be set aside to help subsidize for these businesses. And needing to go beyond beautification in order to have a place where locals and visitors will want to walk around and spend money. Question five, talked about the existing conditions. Talked a lot about the fast-moving traffic and how it's unsafe for pedestrians and cars along our 101 corridor here. They talked about poor visibility. It's severely tough, and the traffic goes really fast. It's hard to find a parking spot. Sidewalks are dangerous was another big, big topic. And there was a lot of comments about the town just needing a facelift altogether, just a nice facelift. When we asked about what should be added to our project, people discussed traffic lights to make it easier and safer, adding public restrooms, improving access to our beaches, food trucks, and more small businesses, as well as more crosswalks and flashing lights. We had a pretty good mix on our survey results. We had 62% of people that live within the city limits and about 37% that lived in the outskirts. So we had a pretty decent pooling of both. And that question was more to just make sure that we're getting a good representation and not just including people that are within the city. And then as well as the number... Question number eight, which talked about whether you own a business or not. 21% of the survey respondents owned a business in Gold Beach, and 78% did not. So again, that is just really a way for us to know how many people... How many of the business owners we got, how many of the non-business owners we got. So that is the survey results there. And you guys can see those on the back wall as well. If you guys have any questions, definitely reach out to me. I'll hand it over to Tammy.
So Tammy Kaufman, the mayor, please. I was sick most of last month, so I don't wanna get sick, I kid. So I just wanted to let everyone know this is not a city council meeting. I know that we're sitting up here, but they put us here so that... They would make sure that you were watching us listen. We're very good at that. Oh, which Main Street is. But you know, the city does have a partnership in this, and the Urban Renewal Agency does as well. We work with ODOT regularly and in conjunction because we share a lot of common interests. I do have a couple of comments, and I don't know exactly where we're going with the meeting because I don't have the agenda of it. Or if I do, I didn't see it. But I know that our staff is very concerned about the actual reduction of lanes in a lot of ways. And I'm hoping that as they move forward with this project, that we come up with some solutions that can work with our emergency services as well as with what we want things to look like. And I only say "we," I mean "you" because I don't really care what it looks like. I don't have any vision. I'm good with numbers and making things happen after somebody gives me a vision. So that's what you're for. And that's what the council's for. So we set goals. They tell me what to do, and then I go do it. So that's how it works. With that, I think I'll let... Give it back to you, Anna. And by the way, for those of you standing, there's four chairs up here in the front. And there's like one or two over there if you wanna sit down.
All right. So we're gonna hand it over to ODOT. They're gonna explain some of the traffic stuff that we don't have the knowledge to explain to you guys, as well as talk a little bit about the Great Streets program. That is a grant that we are hoping to apply for and receive to fund this project. So that'll hand it over to them.
Good evening. So Derek Neval, interim Region Three manager.
Glenn Morrison, interim District Seven manager.
All right. So they invited us because we might have some money to help if we... I should say, at least we can apply for it. We'll see what happens. So, all right. So this Great Streets program, federal highway gave us some extra money within the state of actually across the nation. And one of those programs is Great Streets that we developed. And that is really... I would say in the past, ODOT thought of the roads going through your community as an opportunity for a passing opportunity. I mean, and really, that's what it was. If you would've asked us 10 years ago to add streetscaping, to narrow the lanes, to do bike repair, all that, we probably would've said, "No, we need to get the traffic through their paths." That was kind of our mindset. We've... Over the last 10 years, we've grown, we've changed, we've learned some things along the way. And people are, you know, people have gotten hurt because of those choices years ago. And so our thought process is a little different. And so this Great Streets has really come into communities and saying, "Hey, what do you guys want your streets to look like through communities?" We still need to get traffic through there, so we gotta balance that, right? And there is trade-offs that Glenn will talk about. I'm sure you guys have experienced it. There is trade-offs by doing some of this that you guys gotta evaluate whether that is what you want as a community. So we'll talk about those. We are not here to say one way is better than the other. I think it's a conversation that you guys need to have as a community on what you want. And we can talk about some of the things we've learned, good and bad, as we've done some of this in other communities. Okay? So Great Streets, like I said, in the past, we haven't had funding to do this kind of stuff. This gives us an opportunity to do that. In the past, like I said, we focused on efficiency and moving vehicles through. But that's had an impact on safety of the community. So highways have created barriers to access people walking, hiking. So we've created that over time with our thought process there. This gives us an opportunity to maybe do, look at that a little different. So there's $50 million that are... Our OTC is our Oregon Transportation Commission, has set aside in the regions. There's five regions across ODOT, across Oregon, that will be asking for grant money for certain communities to do some projects. And it's a new program, so they really want it to be impactful so we can say, "Hey, this, you know, show the good things that it does." So if we're talking just little things, this program's probably not the thing. But if we're really trying to transform a community, this could be a good opportunity. And we've listed, kinda in Glenn's area, in Coos, Curry, and Douglas, three communities that we're talking with. Civia Sutherland, Gold Beach. I've lost... Oh, and Myrtle Point. Myrtle Point has showed some interest in doing some changes through those communities. And those are the three that we're gonna...
Oh, Darren? Does that mean we're in the top three in Southern Oregon?
So that's... That's in Coos, Curry, and Douglas. And then we've got three other communities in Jackson and Josephine County that we're having some discussion. So you guys are in the top six that we're talking with. Then we gotta compete statewide, so we need to make sure they're good applications so we can compete statewide. So a couple of things. Planning, design, construction can be eligible. $2 million is the minimum. So it's federal funding. And we really... To use federal funding, really, it costs the money to use federal funding. So we need a good project to make that worth it. It needs to be in a plan or consistent with the plan. And so that, some of the stuff you guys are doing would help with that. And then again, the kind of the proof of concept for future... So again, this is our first time doing this Great Streets program. And so we really want it to be impactful so we can show our Oregon Transportation Commission and others that this is a good program to continue on. I don't know if we talked about it, but it is for the 2024 to '27. So it's in those years that we would... If a community got selected, that's when it would get built. So these are just eligibility. So it's gotta be on a state highway. Gotta have public support. So I think that's what they're... You guys are trying to do today to start that. And needs to consider safety and multimodal access, which I think you could argue that some of these things would definitely help that in your community. Freight considerations. This is a freight corridor. We do need to get freight through here, so we can't narrow it so much that freight is uncomfortable getting through that. So we gotta balance that. That's all that says. This is all the stuff that's eligible. So I'll just let you look at that real quick. But all of these things are eligible in this grant.
Tammy, did you notice there's trees on that list?
Some of these, I would just say, if you guys are wanting, trees could be an example. Landscaping, lighting. ODOT typically doesn't maintain those. So we'd be looking to the city for commitment. Lighting, we say, you know, we could install the stuff, but long-term power comes from, you know, those costs come from somebody else. So you know, those are the things that we need to talk through if we wanted to move forward with some of this stuff. So...
Is green infrastructure, is that things like electrical charging stations and such?
Yes. This is a little outdated. We don't have an exact timeframe. But I just, the stars, I wanna just hit on. Regional submission is gonna be sometime this fall, winter. So what we're hearing so far is by, for sure, by January, we gotta submit pre-applications. So we need to know community's supportive. We need to feel like this is something that we want to apply for for the city of Gold Beach by late this year. And that's just a pre-application. And then the applications come in later with all the details. So... And I'll let Glenn... We wanna talk a little bit about reconfiguration of lanes. Again, we're not here to say that's the answer. There's trade-offs to that discussion. But Glenn will talk about some of the pros and cons to that.
And I believe this came up a few years back, right? Is what triggered this whole presentation we have here, so...
Yeah, we... Most of this was presented to the city council in, I think we said...
18.
Yeah, late '19, early '20.
Right before the pandemic.
It was.
So I took some background here. By '18, we kinda were approached by the city to kind of look at a three-lane configuration through the 101 corridor here in Gold Beach. We did provide a presentation pre-COVID, pre-meet. So I was in a different position at that point. Today, we're just gonna look at a few different things, some of the benefits, trade-offs, kind of some of the traffic analysis we did to come up with our ideas, and then talk about some other areas that have had that happen, and then considerations for implementation. So the average annual daily traffic is about 9,000 vehicles back in '18. You can see here, projected ADT for 2038 is not much higher. So we're not seeing a huge growth uptick over the next several years. The heavy vehicles, so the freight that Darryl was speaking about, it's about 90% of the traffic that uses our highway here. The road width is 63 feet, so it's a pretty nice wide section for what we have to work with. Crashes, you can kind of see over the nine, nine-year period, two severe injuries, eight moderate injuries, 13 minors, and then 30 property damages, so fender benders and stuff like that. So some of the benefits for looking at the reconfiguration, it does, it does improve safety by reducing conflicts. So you have an easier time to, you know, get in the left turn lane, center of the road, get out of the way of live traffic. So a lot less fender benders. With left turn lane, so. And then the speed differentials, it's, it should help with not as much change in traffic speeds. With the average speed dropping throughout the area affected by about a mile an hour, so a little bit of difference in the drop in speeds.
And I would just, I would just add, what that does, that's an average speed drop. So it really takes those high ones that are speeding through, it reduces those because you have only one lane going through it. But we'll talk about, that's going to feel like congestion a little bit though, too.
So some operations for walking and biking. Slower speeds equals safer environment, the double threat. So basically, if you're, you know, walking across traffic, sometimes if someone in the left lane can't really see the person crossing, and the person in the right lane is stopping, so it's not very safe. You can kind of see here the lower picture, it's some of the bulbouts that we've had in other locations. That actually gets the pedestrians kind of out there in more of the view of the traffic to, a little bit more visibility, and then also less distance to cross, across the highway. And then it helps us with getting some designated bike lanes installed as well. Some of the community economic development benefits should help with some exposure for the businesses. Should help with getting traffic in and out of the two-way left turn lane to get into the businesses, and then eliminate hopefully some of the passing, the higher, like Darren mentioned earlier, the higher differential speeds through town. And then hopefully the stores are a little bit easier to see too, from the single lane. So the trade-offs that Darren mentioned earlier, just, we did, you know, with, with that, we will have some delay through town. The controlled intersections definitely will have the more delay, you'll have more traffic queuing at your, at your signals. Looks like about, we're thinking 10 seconds through the, the heavier traffic volumes to getting through town, so the distance through there. And I believe it's an increase about, maybe a little less than five seconds from coming out of the side streets to getting into the highway.
I was just going to say, that's average again. So recognize that in those busy weekends, that would, that's going to feel a lot more. So that's an average over time.
Yes. And then increase in time spit following other vehicles. So obviously, if you have the slower moving vehicles coming through town, you'll have people, you know, behind that, those vehicles, which is what the whole point is, right? To try to slow traffic down. And then obviously, extreme peaks during holiday seasons, just when you have the higher volume of traffic. We have done this recently, up in Port Orford, I'm sure most of you have maybe gone through there recently. The ADT you can see is quite a bit, quite a bit less, 50 to 200 vehicles compared to our little over 9,000 we have here. We've, we've had good positive feedback on that, and we're going to, that's going to be a permanent install here shortly, Darren, with our new project, correct? Cave Junction is another, another example we've done recently. You can see here, the ADT is a little bit higher than Gold Beach, but not a lot, it's pretty close. And same thing, we've had good, good benefit there. Once again, definitely in the higher, higher traffic volume time of the year, there are seeing delays out there, but it seems like it's working pretty well. Some other locations here, you can see, I've got some work done in Ashland, Reeseport, Talent, Le Pine, and then Metal Free Water. And that's it for us on this one.
So really quick, I wanted to follow up and let you guys know, our board of directors is a little bit split on the traffic calming, so we're not all for traffic calming. But what we are all for is safety. So that is the one thing that we all have in common. And I would guess that the majority of you all, safety is also a priority, yeah, absolutely. And we also want to acknowledge that change can be really hard. No one likes change, at least most people don't like change. There might be some weirdos in the room that like change. But for the most, for the most part, most people don't like change. But change can either happen to us or for us. So in this situation, we realize that there is going to be an increase of traffic, but we want to make this change happen for us, not to us, right? We don't want to have to act out of injury or too much traffic in what areas now we need to come up with a solution right now. Coming up with solutions right now tends to be far more expensive and far less thought out. So we want to make sure that we are jumping ahead of the game here and making it intentional, making it what we want, including you guys in this process. Oftentimes, when we have to act out of a reaction, we don't get a chance to, to reach out to the community. And so we really want to make this about you guys and what you guys want to see, and include your guys' feedback, include your guys' concerns. We really just, we really want to make it a safe pedestrian environment here in Gold Beach, that's definitely one of our number one priorities. Cars are made to withstand a hit, people are not. So it's important that we stay ahead of those problems, that we're able to plan accordingly, and like I said, in a meaningful way. We have a lot of money right now being spent to bring tourists to Curry County, which is wonderful. We have some really great programs to do that right now. And so we've noticed, I'm sure everybody noticed during COVID, we had a huge spike of people coming to Curry County. We have a, a perfect mix here of outdoor recreation and isolation, right? So we had a lot of people coming to the coast, to the really not crowded areas to get away from, from COVID, from people. And so we need to recognize that and, and come up with solutions. Like I said, we want to be clear, our perspective is not for or against traffic calming, we are simply trying to bring as much information as possible to everybody involved, all of the stakeholders, the city councilors. We really want to do our due diligence to gather as much data as possible and present that in a meaningful way, so that we can make decisions based on, on real data and what you guys want. Yeah, like I said, more pedestrian traffic will ultimately force our hand, and this is our chance to get ahead of it. We also want to recognize that we do not have the final say, we being Gold Beach Main Street. We are, like I said, just gathering this information for the city, so that they can make the most educated decision possible. Gold Beach Main Street will be making a recommendation to the city council based on the community surveys, this meeting, and all the information that we're able to gather and present that to the city council for them to make a decision ultimately, especially regarding the, the lane reconfiguration, because we know that's a, a big hot topic, so. No? With that, we wanted to just open it up to community feedback. If there's anybody that wanted to speak, we've got some forums here, so one second. All right, Nancy Siroz.
Can I face them?
Yeah. Thank you, Nancy.
I was at the, the city hall when ODOT was here, I guess it was four years ago, I thought it was three years ago. And they talked about reconfiguring then, like Port Orford, and Port Orford had made the change when? Two years before that?
Yeah.
I think. Oh, okay. And so anyway, I went on to a, after that meeting, I went on to the Facebook group in Port Orford and polled them. And there was a lot of people who, who made comments, who said, well, I thought it was a stupid idea, but once it was put in, I really loved it. But the, the figures I found were, yes, there was 18, no, three, and liked some parts of it and didn't like other parts of it, two. So, and, and so I, I really think it is a good idea, but I do think there should be education on the use of that middle left turn lane. It is for going from a side street, turning left onto the highway, and for turning left, getting into it and turning left off of the highway. And people in Port Orford, when I do use it like that, I've been flipped off, and I think I'm going to turn into their lane, and I'm not, I'm just turning into the left turn lane. So, but it's the same way now, like with the islands that we have marked that are, you know, two sets of double yellow lines. You're never supposed to turn left, left across those, those are islands. And so it is illegal to cross those to either, you know, to turn left onto the highway. So education is always good, I think.
Absolutely, thank you, Nancy. Nancy, can you go back to Sherry? All right, we have Kathy Erbich? Erbich? Kathy?
Is that working? This is fine. So I've been a, a resident of, of Gold Beach for 42 years now. So there's been a lot of change in the community since then, and, and we would agree that there's a lot more traffic. We actually live right in the downtown area, so we're directly impacted by that increased traffic. So there are, there are years when during, particularly the month of August, sometimes July, where you drive down the side streets and you cannot get onto 101. And you, you just have to remember, just, just don't even go there, don't try and go down and go onto 101, you've got to drive around and back on the side streets. But not all the streets have the opportunity to do that. And once you've driven down, there's no place to backtrack, you're stuck with people honking behind you and you can't safely get out. So I have a high level of concern with the amount of traffic we have compared to the traffic in Port Orford, of going from the four lanes to the three lanes. And I'm not only concerned for those people who are, are living within the city limits or working within the city limits, but also ambulances and emergency vehicles trying to get anywhere at all. So my, my feeling is, is, is that because of the way our town was initially configured, because of the way that the side roads are angled down to 101, and because of our, our emergency vehicles being located right on 101, and that being the only access to get to many places in town, I, I have real reservations. And I, I do think that more stoplights would help, but I, I think it's still going to be an issue. That said, I love the idea of renovation, I, of, of, you know, more trees, of some facelifts. I would like to see us develop some off-street parking. It seems to me that we have a tremendous amount of underutilized town of, of area, both on 101 and on the streets that are parallel to 101 on either side, that could be developed into beautiful tourist-friendly off, off-street parking with little pocket parts, parks and things. So I, I, as I said, I mean, I, I think it's a fantastic idea. I hope that merchants who own the buildings will, will cooperate in this venture. You know, we, we've got a lot of space that is just deteriorated, where the owners haven't kept it up. So we have shop owners that are kind of looking at stuff and say, ugh, you know? And, and if there's something that we could do to encourage owners of buildings to renovate their space, and maybe cut deals where the city or grant money could purchase areas where there's more parking than what the merchants really need, to make that available for the public in exchange for using those grant funds to give a facelift to their buildings so that we had a really attractive area. I, I think that that could go far. But as I said, just from a safety standpoint, you know, the estimate of, well, it might take you five seconds longer to get out on the road, I can tell you that, that from where we live, there's been times where you could sit there for five minutes and not get out in the road. And, and so that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much. I want to quickly add to that.
Never give a lawyer a microphone.
This is our, you know, our big project, the underground utility streetscape design. But we do do a lot of other grant for the businesses in town. We did a revitalization grant for the Sugar Lay Building there, which is now the High Hill Cycles, as well as we just got a revitalization grant for the interior coverups building for Rusty White and his businesses that he has located there. And so we, we are working, we realize that there is a lot of work to be done, but we are working on those aspects as well, the beautification of the businesses, and there's a lot to come.
I'm just going to say that ANA has encouraged us to move up a level on Oregon Main Street, the state and national organization. And when we do that, we were qualified for a lot more grants that will help us with getting new facades on sections of town. We're very excited about that. I just was watering and weeding at Rogue Outdoor Store, and up comes Alexa Carey, who works for Travel Oregon. And Travel Oregon is really aligning itself now with the Main Street organizations, and is beginning, coming up with a lot more grants for us to apply for, for exactly what you're speaking of, which is business fronts and repair to go along with the streetscape that we want to do.
All right, next up, Joe Ross.
Hello. I'm, have lots of ideas, but I'm just going to talk about two. The first one, south of town, when the kids are running in the wintertime and it's dark, they're running up the road. So maybe we could get a, a pathway for them down towards Kissimmee Rock, light it up, could also be used by the tourists in summertime. And the, the other part is on the north end of town by Motel Six, where you turn to go up Jerry's Flat. Maybe an elevated walkway to get the pedestrians, bicyclists above the traffic, and put a fence and light it up, make that corner safer.
And then Sheri Castell.
Thank you, everybody. Can hardly talk, because I've kind of broken up right now. I liked your last idea, Joe, about the Jerry's Flat overpass, if I live on that road, which is one of the reasons why I, I wanted to talk today. As you know, we have a lot of traffic on that road, and it's a very dangerous road, even though it's been getting repaired several times a year. I am not a road construction type of person, but my, my thoughts were to use all that bridge stuff that's at the end of Jerry's Flat by the bridge, and they repaired it, to build infrastructure underneath the road, instead of continuing patching up the road, patch after patch, and it breaking up. And why some of this structure, you know, can't be built up underneath opposed to what's been done, because it's not working. And in addition to that road, I'm also a pet owner, and I know our town is very into, you know, our, our shelter and walking the dogs and everything. And I know this, this has been the subject before, of getting a dog park. And I know this has been the subject before of getting a dog park. And I would like to see something like that happen. Not just for our own community, but for the people that are traveling here. You know, people that are parking in their motorhomes to go on the jet boat rides and so forth. They have animals as well. So, it's not be just a dog park per se, but a place where, you know, maybe some of the kids from high school or whoever could dog sit there. And like an agility court. So, that's some of my ideas.
Thank you. And is there anybody else that has any questions for ODOT, myself?
I think we get used to doing a lot of things. And they aren't necessarily the best things. But we get used to it. I think four lanes through Gold Beach is probably not the best idea. I mean, it would take getting used to the three-lane thing, but if it was a disaster, you'd always change it back. But I like what I see in Port Orford and Cape Junction, how it's worked out. Reevesport, different situation. I think they got a lot of stuff feeding in from the valley there. And that's why it works so well there. I think it could work out here. I'm willing to try.
Thank you, Dan. Anybody else?
Hi, my name's Kate Hewer, waiter of the pizza. I live on the south side of town.
Sorry, if you can put your mic, they gotta be really close.
Okay. I live on the south side of town. And we walk down to the visitor's center to take our dog to the beach down there. And it is so dangerous. And I'm wondering if there's a way we can extend the thirty mile an hour just beyond the visitor's center. It's kind of crazy then. It's not very welcoming when people can't get in and out of that driveway. And just no sidewalk there, and it's a little hazardous.
That's okay. Thanks, Ian. Sherry, we have Janet up here, I'd like to see.
Actually, I have a question for ODOT.
Sure.
I was looking at the statistics on the roads I want to walk. And I was actually surprised, there's been no fatalities. There's been a few injuries. And how do we compare in Gold Beach? I've heard a lot about how dangerous it is. And how do our statistics compare as you look at our road counts to other areas? I mean, are we doing pretty good or are we doing bad? I'm just trying to get an idea of where we stand.
Yep, you're good. It's on.
Yeah, just for my standpoint, I think you're kind of average there. It seems, we're not seeing anything that's showing alarming at this point.
It's alarming, you said?
It's not alarming.
Yeah. I would say, I mean, you've seen, we're in the fatality down in Brookings Harbor area with pedestrians, some other places. It's abandoned, you know, at this point. So, it's not bad. That's why it's really a community conversation versus a safety. Definitely it will help safety for pedestrians and bicycles. Don't get me wrong. But at this point, you're not having the data.
It's not urgent right now, but it could get there. And then we would have to be acting reactionary versus visionary. Sure. Let me, is there anybody else? Yep.
This question is for ODOT. My name's Sally. You had mentioned when you were speaking that you have a, like, a plan for the ambulances and with the three-lane. I mean, I know when you hear the ambulance, you're supposed to pull over and try to merge. I mean, I would think it would go through the left turn lane. The cars would merge to the right, as we're supposed to, to get out of the way for the ambulance. And then the ambulance would go in that middle lane. Is that what you were, you were?
Yeah, yeah. The only risk is if we do start putting pedestrian islands in the middle, then they gotta go around that. But in general, if you think about it, it's, somebody mentioned, it's just typically mainly just right. You still have the same roadway width you do today, no matter if that's a five-lane, four-lane, three-lane. You have the same pavement width. And so, yeah, typically what we've seen, and there's some good videos out there from emergency responders saying they were really concerned about it. And after it, they think it works great. But you can talk to some others and they'll give you a different opinion. City of Reevesport, like somebody mentioned, they're not real excited about it from an emergency response standpoint. So, like I said, there's a little bit of trade-off there that you guys would need to talk through.
I definitely think it's a balance, right? And that's, I think, the goal, is to find that balance. What would work for our city specifically, you know, might not work for Reevesport. Or what works for Reevesport might not work for here, right? But we have to find that balance of what will accommodate our first responders and what will be the safest for pedestrians and what will slow traffic down, because ultimately the traffic is pretty bad and they go pretty fast. And I know I'm not the only one that notices people just flying through our town. And it's pretty dangerous. Laurie, you want to say something?
I've got, I've got a true story and I've got a tourist observation of our lane configuration. And I must say that, as we've said, our board is a little split. But however, we do have one board member who was not for traffic calming and now is considering that it's a great idea with all that it can offer with widened sidewalks and bike lanes and that sort. So, for me personally, and I'm speaking for myself, I am for traffic calming. I see it making a much more inviting town that people want to stop in. And so, try to picture this. So, you're a tourist. This story came from a tourist. He says, "And I'm coming up Cape Sebastian. I'm really bummed because I've been behind a delivery truck and an RV. And I'm gonna hit the gas and I'm going up the hill and I'm gonna pass him." So, he passes them up the hill. He gets to the other side, comes down on the flats on Pissler River. What does he come into? Two fishing boats. Slows them back down again. And he goes, he can't pass because it's August and there's lots of oncoming traffic. So, what happens, do you think, when he gets to Gold Beach and sees the four lanes? All rise. So, he guns it and he's getting around the traffic, speeding through town. And all of a sudden, his wife says, "Honey, honey, let's stop and have a cup of coffee." And the guy's like, you know, he's not telling his wife, but he's saying, "No, no, no, honey, we'll do it in the next town." And so, they go a little further and he's speeding and weaving through the traffic. And she goes, "I gotta pee." The guy says, "Oh, my gosh. Either I do what my wife wants or I probably get a divorce." Now, if you want to stand forward, if you're a gentleman, who would be willing to let your wife suffer in the car? Let me know. Anyway, what I'm saying is we've got a speed trap in Gold Beach. Seriously, they haven't been able to pass coming north or south. They get to our town, they see four lanes, and they hit it. And they, you see them weaving, you know what's happening. You know, so we've got a balance. We've got the problem of getting out on the Main Street. We've got the problem of it taking longer to get through town. But do we want people to stop? Or do you want them to get in the mode that, "Oh, great, here's my opportunity to pass. Let's gun it." So, it's something to think about in terms of how much longer will it take in August? Will it take two minutes? Will it take three minutes, Darren? You know, maybe more than ten seconds. But what will that give us? Will it give us a more inviting town where people do decide that they don't have to just speed and pass, but that they can actually stop and have a cup of coffee, maybe go through a gift shop? And our facades are getting better and our streets are lined with trees and our beaches are fifth in the world. And pretty soon, we've got more of an economy. Pretty soon, we have a middle class back, like we had when we had the mill. So, these are decisions we need to make. Ultimately, the city's gonna make the decision. I did talk to Bend. They've got that middle lane, three lanes. They love it. And all emergency goes right down the middle lane. Not a problem. So, and I've got one more story for you, since I'm blabbing here a lot. This is a true story and it's about safety, which we've been focusing on. So, can you guys all picture yourself sitting in the Wong's Cafe? And you've got that crosswalk right there, sort of diagonal from Sunset? And in the inside lane is a logging truck. And he's stopped because he sees a little kid coming across the crosswalk. And here, this kid gets right in front of the crosswalk. The logging driver looks in his rearview mirror and here comes a car racing down past the logging truck. And he's blowing his horn. The mother is in Wong screaming and banging on the window, seeing his son come across the street. I don't know if it's when someone's gonna get killed in a crosswalk. So, eventually, ODOT's gonna have to come in, especially in our town, the way people race through. ODOT's gonna have to come in and put lights at every single crosswalk. How slow is that gonna make our town? I mean, seriously, crosswalks are dangerous. So, there's my two bits. Or would we move?
Is there any other questions or concerns? Give me a chance, Sherry.
Debbie Richter. So, there may not be an answer to this question that you guys can give me. But this is a concern everybody in this room has. And underground utilities are amazing. I've lived in places where you don't have the poles and they're just great. Ballpark idea, how long would our streets be torn up to implement this? A year, two years, five years?
Based on a conversation with Florence, it took them ten months. Ten months was what was for, there were one section that they did. Now, their section might have been a little shorter than ours, but not by... So, ours is a 1.2 mile stretch that we're looking at here. And that's a great question. I don't know the 100% answer to it. But our feasibility study is our hope, is to get that information from that feasibility study as well as the cost analysis. Because that's another big question, is how much is this going to cost?
Ten months or whatever sounds a lot better than four or five years.
Absolutely. Yeah. No, I can't imagine it taking four or five years.
It's been a year.
Little over a year. Yeah. Yeah, we don't have that answer today, but, you know, we hope to find that out.
I could speak to that just a little bit. So, you're not waiting for all your utilities and everything that you put in the ground? They will put the conduit in the ground? And then generally, I know at the Ford, so when I was involved in that, we put the conduit in the ground for everything. So, the power company, all the utility, all the communication companies, any of the utilities, the conduit was put in the ground. They put holstering in. And then we, as a utility, go in there, pull that in after the road is restored. And so, it's not that long of a project. It's a matter of getting the ditch open, putting the conduit in the ground, and closing it back in.
You might want to introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm very exclusively by the red, below the red, and I have to say.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Anita. If you're gonna put in a bunch of traffic lights, I highly request that you time so people can go thirty-two miles an hour and it'll all be green. That will save you a whole bunch of traffic problems right there.
I know my friend Carol there, that Carol, we go through here from Colorado and there's a road called Colfax. And if you hit that, if you hit the light and it turns green and you go thirty miles an hour, you will hit every single green light, but you have to time it just right. If you go, if you speed, you will hit every red light. So, little tip.
Simone was trained, I went new to town. So, I want to go back to the wife. I had to go pee. You know, I turned sixty-nine and, you know, that's important. I know. When you drive through this town, there's no sign that says restroom. Rest area, not one. And then if you really don't know this town, you got help if you don't know where the port is. Because that's a public restroom that's always open and works. Because if you, I'm just saying, you might want to have one sign that says, "Rest area." Can I put that, yes, the sheriff put in rest area sign?
ODOT signs. Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, we got more questions, okay? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bill Williams. I've lived here for about seven years now. And one of the big questions I get from everybody around here is, "What are we gonna do with the Dairy Queen? What are we gonna do with buildings behind the police department that's vacant? What are we gonna do with the cam shop?" If those three spots there are something that makes this place look terrible, I'm sorry. What are we gonna do about it?
Main Street has some ideas. We have an economic vitality committee that is actively working on vacant building issues. So, we are working on that. It is a big job. It's not an overnight fix. So, there are conversations happening. There are people working behind the scenes to try to fix some of that.
Thank you. And you took my pee question.
Sherry, Jeremy in the back has a question.
Mary Stansel. So, in my past life, I worked for the Forest Service and it was when we had a hundred and fifty full-time employees. We approached ODOT to put a crosswalk in because we had to park on the opposite side of the road. They put one of those traffic monitors in and came back to us and said the average speed coming into town was forty-seven miles an hour, which made it too difficult and unsafe to put a crosswalk in. So, I am a full proponent of the three lanes.
So, in previous years, when you guys have had these forums, I've talked about the problem with Third Street Turn and Mackay's and how they're not aligned. And I turn on to Third Street, making a left-hand turn about three or four times a day, as do roughly a hundred and fifty people that come to the library every day. And I see that there was concrete put in by Gold Beach Main Street for benches. So, I'm assuming that that feedback wasn't taken that seriously. But my question is, yeah, is there something that could be done about Third Street?
You know, I don't have an answer to that question. The benches that are going in at Mackay's are gonna mirror the Napa. But we don't have any plans, I mean, we're working on the plan to reconfigure the lanes right now, but we don't have any answers to what the lanes are gonna look like as of now. So, we don't have an answer to my question. Does ODOT have an answer to that question? I don't.
We have looked, I mean, the city has asked us to look at it a couple times. We've provided a few thoughts, but it's really tough to add, to change much unless you're gonna do lane configurations. I mean, adding the protected left turn there would solve that issue. So, there's some access management steps where you can line up, like you talked about, like some driveways, stuff there that we proposed that we could explore further. But the real, for that left turning, it's that protected left turn pocket.
So, as someone who lives in town and walks or bikes most everywhere with small children, I think it's really important that we have sidewalks both sides, pretty much all the way from Kissimmee Rock to the other side of the bridge. So, like, there are certain places, if I'm gonna go run and we want to go to the bridge, I can't take my kids because, like, we couldn't get to Jerry's Flat because there's no sidewalk to get there, so you have to cross. But then you have to figure out how to cross by the bridge. It's just, it's not safe. So, both sides sidewalks all the way would be, bike lanes would be amazing, but at least sidewalks.
I have a non-city councilor question. When my friend was living with us, ODOT put in on the sidewalk. So, we live on Tomcat. So, when you, if you come down Tomcat, there's the accessibility ramps. There's two of them put in right there that go to no crosswalk, that go to no sidewalk. So, every time I see it, I hope that means there's a sidewalk or crosswalk coming. But it was an interesting thing. And so, when you ask that, and it's not all about that, that, so they're there. So, we can get the stroller, like, we block, we can get the stroller up. But there's stuff to build on, build to, we could add to it. So, that's my comment, last question as a resident, not as a councilperson.
We'll try and answer it. I don't want to answer that. I can definitely speak to why we have the ramps to nowhere. I actually worked on that project and somehow I got promoted after that, so I must have. So we had a, we were litigated a while back, what was for ADA ramps compliance throughout the state of Oregon. And so those ramps popped on our list as far as needing to have ramps there, even though at the time we were wondering like, can we somehow push this back? And unfortunately, we had to deal with them when we were there, just to address those locations. I mean, like you said, down the road, if we had more infrastructure, it'll be perfect. But it is kind of odd right now.
So we'll go with setting up for the future?
There you go, yeah.
And as you said, there are, you know, the state does have, you know, ADA requirements that they're starting to, you know, focus on. So there's a lot of that that can be worked on, I guess, in the city of Gold Beach. And that's a part of our project as well, is that ADA accessibility and safety.
I wanted to mention that the sidewalks belong to the property owner. They don't belong to the city and that's been since the 1960s. So if you see a sidewalk that's not built, that's because the property owner didn't do it. If you see one that's damaged, it's because the property owner didn't fix it. And one of the things about the Great Streets program is it could include sidewalks. And I think that's part of the original vision is to help those business owners and property owners either update their sidewalks or actually put them in for the first time. The city has paid for some sidewalks. We did a lot of work on Sixth Street back in the 90s. And we just recently did the one towards Lee's Road in front of Riley Creek. And we're working on trying to get a grant to put another one in, also for school routes. But technically, it's the property owner's deal. And if you get a bunch of property owners on a street that want to put them in, we can do what's called a local improvement district and get some low interest money to help somebody do that and pay payments. The other question I wanted to ask, because I think it was Mr. Scollin that brought it up. Why don't we just try the three lanes and see if it works and we can just put it back? So my question to ODOT is, if we do that, you will pay to put it in, but who pays to take it out? And how much is that?
So, oh, so we have done some pilots. Port Orford was a pilot. Port Orford worked out to where we said, hey, we'll put it in. And we had a paving project coming that's going to get paved next year. And so you just have to live with it until the paving project. Then we could put it back to the old way if you didn't like it. So that, Gold Beach, we don't have a paving project coming. So we, we would have to talk about if it didn't work, how we put it back. And I think last time we talked about is we would, and we'd have to see if we can come up with funding. We would install it. That's what our discussion was back in 2020, is we would install it and then have some discussion about if it doesn't work, how do we pay for it to get it back? Because there is no paving project, at least for five, five plus years. And I can't remember the cost. I know that question's coming. I think it's around $100,000.
That's what I remember.
Yeah, no, cost went up since then a little bit, so.
Come on, we can get that money. Don't worry, Tammy, we'll find the money we need it.
Do it or undo it.
To undo it if we have to.
So I think we're open to that conversation if you wanted to try a pilot.
Why would you want to go from four lanes to three lanes, really? Like, if you've got slow traffic, right? I'm going to be a hybrid, but you know, slow traffic, you want to pass them? I don't know. What's one of the three lanes again?
It slows the traffic down and it's supposed to make it easier to turn, like into traffic. You only have to go across one lane of traffic to turn left instead of two. And then you also don't have that left turn, person turning left and they're stopped. And then you've got to go around them, right? So the left, the people going left will pull into that center lane so that doesn't block traffic. Because right now it blocks traffic when people are making left-hand turn. Do you have anything else?
Well, the other thing is I think it adds opportunity to add bike lanes. So it just adds other features. It's safer for pedestrians to cross the road. So you don't have that double threat that Glenn talked about. So I think it provides a lot of opportunities for, for non-highway.
For the fact that Gold Beach Main Street is a person that coordinates funders to come together to do a project. So as Darren said, when we're looking for federal dollars, we're looking for ODOT dollars. If we make our project bigger and more impactful, we are more likely to get grants we're applying for.
Shereen's coming over.
Hi, my name's Cindy and I'm just wondering, one that people have with Gold Beach is the street, the street signs. You can't see them. I don't know if we do the whole renovation thing, if they'll change those, make them bigger, make them more obvious, because I only know that you come up here when you get by Mackays and then you turn and come up. I don't, all the business, businesses have the same looking driveways as the streets do. And it's confusing, I think, when you're trying to find an address. And we don't even have an 11th Street. I don't even think we have a sign anymore. People keep telling me, oh, I didn't know what happens with 11th Street, but there's no sign. So how, who maintains all that?
That's a good question. I know there's been a lot of, a lot of conversation on Facebook about that lately. I've noticed that. Tammy, do you have an answer?
You may have just going to put trees covering them anyway.
If those signs on that side would be a city street, if it's a, if it's brown, it's the city. If it's square, it's ODOT, right?
In general, I think, so most of the side streets, I believe, on, along one-on-one would be ODOT.
Yeah, well, there's two signs.
You're talking the green sign that just says Third Street.
Yeah, because you can't freedom until you're right upon them.
Are, they're too small.
They're too small and they blend in with everything. The lines are gold and it's basically just that's gold. It's hard to tell where this is. I pulled it apart.
Anybody else have any questions? I think we're up dancing. Couple more questions, guys, and then we'll wrap it up so we can start cleaning up, okay? Thank you, guys.
My name's Jeff Holloway. Back to the utilities question, underground. Is that just for Main Street? Or is, are you going to tie in side streets going from above, above ground to underground?
Our project right now currently is just focused on the Main Street. We haven't talked about the outskirts of the city limits.
So I have a citizen actually come to me today, knowing that we were going to be talking about this. Oh, he's here, but he hasn't spoken up, so I'll speak for him. He, you know, oftentimes when you see those beautiful shots of the sunset, some of the promo videos that we're putting out there and spending a lot of money to get into big magazines, you'll see the power lines right through the shot, right? And it just kind of kills the vibe. So one of the recommendations this gentleman recommended is, you know, whether you put the power lines a block off Main Street or you bury them, why not consider running them east-west versus north-south to kind of mitigate, mitigate the views? Yeah.
I mean, if you're going to do it, right?
Yeah, that's, that's definitely a conversation for the, for the engineers, but you know, we're, we're wanting to have these conversations, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Summer's mad at me. All right, and that's it, everybody. Thank you, guys, so much for coming. We really, really appreciate it.